Ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. And as Mayor, I call to order the meeting of Laconia City Council scheduled for this hour on Monday, May 8, 2017. As always, we'll begin our meeting with a salute to the American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Armin Boldak in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will note for the record that our minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Mary Reynolds. And I would ask that she please call a roll.
Counselor Doyle?
Here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Mayor?
Present.
Counselor Hunter?
Present.
Counselor Bobbitt?
Here.
Siding Mayor, everybody.
Present. Also note for the record that the council is joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by the Finance Director Donna Woodham. First order of regular business tonight is acceptance of minutes. These are the minutes to our last meeting on April 24th. They were submitted to the council membership on August 26 by the clerk. No corrections or changes were received by the clerk, and so offering the council one mass chance to make any changes. In lieu of that, I will declare that the minutes to our April 24 meeting are approved as submitted by the clerk. Consent and action calendar. I have two items on the agenda tonight. One is a request by the American Cancer Society to raise funds at Opechii Park on October 18 through October 22 for the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Annual Event that we've approved many times. Any questions before we get to motions? All right, a motion would be in order to approve the request by the American Cancer Society to raise funds at Opechii Park on October 18 through October 22, 2017, for the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk as requested. Moved by Counselor Boldak, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving that request, please raise a hand. Five votes in the affirmative, and that motion carries. I failed to note earlier that we have one Counselor absent tonight, Counselor Lippman, but five are present, and that a quorum has been established for this meeting. Sorry for overlooking that. Next request is to approve the Winnipeg Flagship Corporation site plan for 211 Lakeside Avenue Railroad Station vendor layout for Motorcycle Week 2017. Apparently, the Flagship Corporation missed the deadline for submitting their plan this year, but there are no changes to what it's always been, as far as I know. And so, a motion would be in order to approve the site plan submitted by the Winnipeg Flagship Corporation for 211 Lakeside Avenue Railroad Station vendor layout for Motorcycle Week 2017. Moved by Counselor Boldak, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion? Counselor Hamel.
Have they paid all fees for the technical review committee and all that?
They will pay the associated vendor license fees and everything that are appropriate with their site, yes.
Okay.
Whether they have to date or not, I'm not sure, but they will before the event starts.
Okay.
All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in the affirmative, that request is approved as well. Citizen comments for matters not on tonight's agenda. This is the appropriate place in the evening for anyone to address the city council who wishes to on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Dunn.
Yes, good evening. I'm Cal Dunn. I live at, I live in the presidential section of Laconia, on Garfield Street, right by Grant and Lincoln. And I'm here tonight, I have some good news, I think. I got to the bottom of the rubbish ordeal here. And first off, I'd like to state, I've spoken to a couple of the board members on the side, and I think that I gather that they feel a little pressured sometimes to do something. And I've never asked for anything to be done, so I'd like to put everybody at ease there. I don't intend to ask for anything tonight. I think one thing the paper got right was that I just demanded questions. Wanted to know why the trash wasn't being picked up, what to do about it. I didn't want to mess, we're not irresponsible like Union Avenue, with the back springing mattresses that are out there for a week or two. Wanted to make sure that everything was appropriate, whatever action we took. So, at this time, I'd like to pass out if Mary would. This is an email that I received from Mr. Myers, April 27th, that indicates the city's ordinance in regards to the trash pickup and their policy in the city. As it states here, it clearly states that, you know, they're not to pick up trash on private roadways, lanes, or anything of the such. So it's, I guess, the case the city's won. I don't get my trash picked up. They beat me. But it's not all in what way you take me. I can deal with anything you throw at me. It's how we get to you that bothered me a little bit. I'd just like to state, you know, voice my opinion as a multiple taxpayer in the city of Laconia, outside of the Garfield Street end, multiple elsewhere in Laconia. But a few things were a little disheartening. And number one, not to have notice after 40 years of service. I don't think that's good manageable services by the city. There should be some type of notice and what to do with the trash, which there was nothing whatsoever. Typical with the city's past.
I think we all agree that that was a bad oversight.
Yes, and in fact, Mr. Myers had apologized, but I must admit, with all sincerity, his words mean nothing to me. They're very inexpensive. So, the notice, and like I said, we just wanted to find out what to do with the trash appropriately. We had no idea after 40 years what to do with it. Bring it to the dump, or dump it in the lake, or what you wanted us to do with it. So, that was one thing. The other thing was, moving on here, that Mr. Myers' theory, I'd like to remind the board of last session, the 24th. You know, it was that the city had set an end of maintenance sign out at the end of Garfield Street, which prompted the driver of Casella's truck to take notice and to inquire about the status of the road. And Casella, Casella elected to stop going up the hill. That was what we were told. Well, there's two things that Mr. Myers didn't realize, I'd like to point out. Number one, the sign that the city put out there, January 25th, I have everything documented and logged, everything that's happening here. That sign was gone a week later, by the, by the 1st of February. I don't know, I think Mr. Anderson said it got plowed up, they found it in the spring. I have no idea, I was out of state, but it was gone. So, we have a truck driver that saw a sign in the middle of March that wasn't there. I don't know. And then, you may have noticed in the paper, I have two posted signs up my roadway. I think Mr. Mayor was present, if you recall, you may have seen those. And it just behooves me that this truck driver, for 10 years, never saw those posted signs. So I thought it was a little suspicious. The last meeting, I told you I would call Casella, which I did, talked to the office manager, Josh Gochet, and he fanatically denied any involvement with the termination of the trash pickup. Said it was clearly ordered by the city. And in fact, by Ian Zalmash, through, of course, the director, Wes Anderson. So it was the city all along that knew this, and I sat here, excuse me, stood here, April 10th, inquiring in front of the board here, trying to find out what was going on. April 24th, the same, and this man was right here. Never, he's the one that took the initiation and stopped, terminated the service, never stood up and cared to explain. An April 10th meeting, Mr. Myers said he knew nothing about it. It was okay, he was going to look into it and get back to us. Two weeks. Two trips, the truck didn't come up, and we're wondering what's going on. That's inappropriate, in my opinion, for a city manager. As a businessman for 43 years in this city, I didn't work that way. So, you know, there was, unfortunately, one of the councils, the last meeting isn't here tonight, and felt I was a little abrasive with my comments with Mr. Myers and Mr. Anderson. I don't take lightly to liars and deceitful people. If that's the way you want to win, that's fine. I don't play that way. The other thing that I pointed out, the same subdivision that I'm in, the exact same one that was done in 1970, my brother's place, the trash is still picked up there. Mr. Mayor, you're familiar with that right away, the private road that goes down there. That's selective enforcement. Do you understand? That's against the law. The Hampshire law. Selective enforcement. When I approached Mr. Anderson about that, he says if you keep that up, he'll be terminated too. Why shouldn't he? Why shouldn't my brother's service be terminated if that's the law? Listen, I was born, like many of you here, I love this city. I was raised here, I'll die here. Well, I don't know about that, but I'm sure they'll bury me here.
Depends on the time of year.
Yeah, exactly. I'm sure I'll be buried here. I feel deeply about this community, and I just do not feel that, I'm not trying to get at anybody individually, it's not a proper way and good management for the taxpayer. The custom, oh, no, we're not customers. You just take our property if we don't pay, and somebody else comes along. Customers are long gone with that. But at any rate, lastly, I was asked, what's the big deal bringing your trash down 300 feet? Well, you know, there isn't. I mean, it's not a big deal. I'm not that old. My wife and I are only here three quarters of the year. The other fourth of the year, the city does nothing. Doesn't pick up our trash, nobody occupies the house. Well, in 1973, I volunteered to run through the jungle in Southeast Asia, Vietnam. I'm a little bit older, but I can bring out the trash. I can still bring it out. And my neighbor, a middle-aged woman.
Mayor, Mayor, I think he's had his five minutes.
All right, I'm coming to a close. If I could ask for another minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
I apologize if this offends you, Mr.
You've offended everybody. You don't need to call our city manager a liar in whatever you did.
Oh, yeah?
That's right.
I spoke to Josh Gochet.
Let's wrap it up here.
Okay. He said the C, yeah, I'll wrap it up.
Wrap it up.
Because you're disrespectful too.
Oh, you were the one that started.
All right, come on.
For more than one meeting now.
The neighbor, which is, I've admitted, a tenant of mine, a middle-aged woman, she is out of work by the doctor's orders. She worked, she was a specialist at New Hampshire Ball Baron. Her heart is very bad, very, very bad. Twenty percent of her, she's currently on a list to get a heart transplant. I tell you this because if she, she's found at the bottom of the hill rolled up someday, bringing down the trash, the city's going to be in a bad place. So, I, I'd like to make one other point, again, with the city manager here. You know, when I pointed out my situation, South Bay, Long Bay, and Briar Crest was pointed out for examples. Come on. Those are modern developments. They have HOA fees. They're deed restricted. This house was built in 1915, the other one in 1957. I have no deed restrictions. This has been going on, to use that for an example, the manager? You might as well say the city doesn't pick up trash in Belmont. So, I accept the fact, we'll take care of the trash, and I'll open it to any questions or comments.
I think we're all set. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Oh, one thing. If you look at the paper I gave you, the ordinance, and the bold print, you might notice F, it says ordinances refer to this code the city adopted in 1995. That's 18 years after my services began. I think we're grandfathered. I mean, certainly, the 1915 house, 102 years, that surpasses the, the code. Ordinances cannot control the past. You only have control from the future on, 1995. That's why trash isn't picked up at Mr. Boldak's place and others.
All right, we'll look into that aspect of it.
I'd make the board to make a decision on it tonight.
Thought you weren't asking us to do anything tonight. Isn't that what you started with?
All right, well, let me phrase it this way. Why don't you do the respectable thing?
I'm trying.
Okay. The ordinance is.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, could we, could we ask the manager to brief us at our next meeting on the grandfathering issue?
I'd be happy to do it right now. There's no grandfathering on an item like this, on a zoning, on a setback, on uses. Those would be grandfathered, but a service like this, there's no grandfathering in state law.
So, you lost me there on zoning and your reference to zoning and whatnot.
If.
Clearly, there is on zoning.
Right, but if something doesn't comply with current zoning and the structure on a property, we wouldn't go in and make a property owner conform to today's zoning. The structure would be grandfathered.
Without paying for it.
There's, there's no grandfathering for something like.
For a service.
Service, like a trash pickup.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda? No? Okay, we'll move on then to public hearing. We do have a public hearing tonight. This hearing is with regard to ordinance 2017-235-04, amending Chapter 235, the city code zoning relative to accessory dwelling units. Notice that this public hearing was made on a Thursday, April 27, 2017, edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, at the Gale Memorial Library, the Laconia Community Center, and the offices of the Laconia School District. This is the new ordinance proposal to come in line with state law with regard to cities and towns losing per legislation that was passed last year and conquered, that prohibits towns from prohibiting, as a matter of right, or prohibiting, I shouldn't say that, accessory dwelling units in any residential area of their city. And so I'm going to declare this public hearing open to the public at 18 minutes past 7:00, and ask if there's anyone here tonight who would like to address the council on this Yes, in the back, sir.
May I approach?
You may, right here. Please help the clerk tonight, any of all of you, by identifying yourself and where you live.
I'm Tom Kudzma, K-U-D-Z-M-A, 6 Bell Hill Drive. I think that, I'm going to start by saying that I think the legislature bit off more than it should have in passing the state one, but that's been done, so the question is, how does Laconia live with it? I'd like to describe a situation with which I am intimately familiar. There was a house built by a real estate agent. His parents were very elderly, and he legally put an addition onto the house, which would, by the way, comply with the requirements here. Soon, his parents both died, and he rented the in-law apartment to another couple. Then he decided that he didn't want to live there, and he sold the entire kitten caboodle to another, another couple. So at that stage, we had renters and a new owner. The new owner then sold the property, to my family, by the way, and they were stuck with a renter. The renter finally moved out, and my family took over the entire place as a single unit. Incidentally, the door between the so-called accessory unit and the main unit was blocked by a wall. Temporary wall was put across for privacy for the apartment. It hadn't been blocked while the original owner's parents were in it. Now, let's take a look at what the city does, not this city. They regard this, this house as a two-family house. It's no longer an in-law apartment, it's a separate dwelling unit to the main house. Fully attached, separate heating, separate electrical, separate sewage, and so forth, meeting all the requirements for an accessory use. So we have now, upon my mother's death, we sold the house. In came the new owner, and the accessory apartment, blocked off again, was used by a relative who moved out. Now it's back to two families, unrelated. You see what happens here? Back and forth, people don't live forever, and what they're doing does not go on forever. Not as a matter of bragging, but as information, I was on the zoning board for 22 years. I would like to think that it was a very honest board, and I'm not casting any aspersions on others. I just, I'm just stating a fact that I could always rely on the people to make an honest decision. The most painful decisions to be made were on in-law apartments. They didn't always get them. Again, they were a special exception. Does the neighborhood have similar things around? Most of you know the zoning background to that, what they have to go through legally, I mean. So why are they so painful? Because the person seeking the in-law apartment, let's call it what it was, usually turned out to be a developer who merely wanted to convert the accessory use to a two-family dwelling. Not to put it in what was rated as a two-family district, but to put it, have this thing staying alone in it. And that led to all kinds of things, such as a house across the street being renovated into, it was a single-family residence. It acquired an in-law apartment and an office, and now it is a primary residence, an in-law apartment which is separately rented, and the office is also separately rented. So it went from one to three in a single-family district. I've gone through this ordinance, and I understand the difficulties the city is going through because I've been there. If you're going to have a separate person living there as a renter and not related in any way, the assessment should be for a two-family home, and that's not clearly spelled out here. It's one thing when the in-laws or the, or the parents live in it, and it's really one family compound, but when it separates, it becomes two families. The interior door, when it becomes two families, is hardly desirable, and that was seen in ours where the temporary wall was put up. The additional entrance to get into it was, the building was on a slope, so that it was ridiculous to have the main entrance at the lower level and have to climb up the stairs into the unit which was at ground level in the front. Fortunately, they put a door in the front. And if you're going to have an in-law apartment or accessory for elderly people, I would assure you that my mother, when she lived in that section of the house because she was severely handicapped, used that exit and entrance for ambulance runs and fire department rescues and so forth dozens of times. They couldn't have pulled her out through any other entrance. So I think that number seven is not called for in most cases. And number 10, number 10 is really the front door, which should be there. The additional parking. There are houses in the city in nice districts where the additional car for the additional unit is parked right on the front lawn, in the front lawn, not on it, in it, because it's up to the hubcaps and mud. Not a very good thing for property values. I think the city has done its very best to, with the ordinance, it's a tough nut to crack, but I ask that my comments be considered as means of improving what's here, based upon my own experience. Incidentally, when my parents died, they had been living in the accessory unit with complete connection. For handicapped people and very elderly people to have them on the same floor and let the ambulance be able to carry them in and out is a total blessing for them. And it was only until we sold the place that we realized that we'd been taxed as a two-family all those years. By the way, the lot size and everything, there were no problems with that. I'm willing to answer any questions you might have. I've done the best I can on.
As I read the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, the, assuming one meets the, all of the provisions of which you. of which you outlined some, it shall not be taxed as a two-family dwelling. It shall be considered a single-family dwelling by this ordinance.
But of course, I've just described the situation where it is basically used as a two-family dwelling.
And there's nothing in this ordinance to prevent that, correct?
Correct.
So I believe it should be--
In other words, the state law does not allow us to dictate that one of the two parties, if you will, has to be or that they have to be related?
Granted. But if there are two dwelling units in the same building, it's a two-family. That's the point.
Well, this is saying specifically it's not. It shall be considered a single-family dwelling with an accessory dwelling use.
Granted. But I've just described a concatenation of events--
If I followed you there correctly, and I'm not positive that I did, every different generation that you described would be perfectly legal under this ordinance, except that that door could not have been closed off. This says the door has to be there.
And that you have to have, you can't have another door from the front. You have to have it in the back.
Side or rear.
So there are two things. And I've just shown you the can of worms whereby a two-family house would then be taxed as a single. Is that fair to those people who own rental property in the city and have a two-family house? I think there's some injustice here that should be taken care of. You can bet your boots that when you sell the place, they're going to sell it as a Because that's what the city claims it is. Whether it's taxed as such or not is another matter. You've got a minefield here. I'm just saying, send them out and take a look. I think that it should be amended in some way and that the delegation in Concord should also do something to it. Okay, should the zoning board have its input? My answer is yes. Because otherwise, we have no checks and balances, whatever. Someone says, well, that's a pain. It doesn't go to the zoning board for a variance or a special exception unless the zoning administrator feels that it doesn't meet the requirements of the law.
Well, no, under this case, it would go regardless.
Yeah, well--
Didn't have the accessory unit without the approval of the zoning board. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Stephen Bogart. I'm a resident, 21 Spruce Street. And I too have a couple of concerns with this. As not with the sections that are regarding state law, the state law is pretty clear that anything attached is fine dandy and there's nothing you can much do about it. But the state law did allow the cities to come in and overview unattached buildings. And under Section 4, we, the, under the way this is written, it's saying that anything that's existing would currently be okay to make an accessory to. Now, one of the things I have an issue is there's no one in residential area, you're now taking a single-family home, and if they have a 700-square-foot barn, they would be able to now make that into a 700-square-foot apartment.
Where are you reading that?
In Section 4.
The one that starts the ADU?
It's the last couple of lines there. And it clearly states that if it's an existing building, may it be a shed or a barn, they could develop it into an accessory use without going to see anybody other than--
So you're saying that the square footage requirement doesn't apply if it's a separate detached unit?
Oh, it applies. You can build up to 700 square foot, but it can't be less than 300 square feet. So you can create, in these new times, what's called a tiny home on your property by just going to the planning department and getting a building permit. Okay? So now you're taking a single-family home and building a second 700-square-foot home in the backyard. And the only reason I bring that up is to bring that light because there's no one overseeing that. The question came back on the zoning board, as you know, I'm on the zoning--
Well, you would still have to go to the zoning board for a special exception.
I don't see any special exception in here at all.
Well, the special exception applies to all of these conditions.
Does it?
Yeah.
But if they meet the conditions, then all you're having to do is it's an accessory use.
Sorry, say again?
If they meet the conditions written here, there's nothing other than, well, I guess there is. Okay.
It's only a lot, these accessory, under the proposal in front of us, regardless of what zone it's in, you have to go to the zoning board to get a special exception, to create an accessory dwelling unit, regardless of whether it's in the garage or in the house or whatever. In every instance, you have to go to the zoning board for a special exception.
Okay. Then that does create the checks and balance. I was not aware of that portion of it.
No problem. That's what the hearing's for.
The other thing I would add to it was, the question also was, if they don't have an existing use, then I had asked, is there, what if they build a shed or a barn? Can they just automatically apply and then make that? Well, the question was, they would have to do a two-step or build the shed or barn and then apply. So if there's no timeframe in the difference, then theoretically--
Somebody builds a barn new.
Builds a brand-new barn, 700 square foot, and then within, as soon as they got the okay, that's done, they can apply for the accessory use. Unless there's a timeframe put in there to say, one must have it as a barn or something like that.
The way I read this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you could build a brand-new house and a brand-new garage under this and have the, above the barn, have an accessory dwelling unit from day one, if you get a special exception.
And as long as it meets the setbacks for the side--
Yeah, you have to have enough land for setbacks and all that. But if you do, it could be brand-new and--
You wouldn't have to go to the step and say, oh, build it as a barn, wink, nod, nod.
Can all be done simultaneously.
You could get that approval right out of the gate, as long as you have the setbacks and the land for it.
Right. Could be a brand-new structure, day one.
Okay, just bringing that up--
I'm not defending it, I'm just saying that's the way I read this.
Well, that's why I'm bringing this up myself, is to make sure everybody's aware--
Now, the state law is, does not, this is something we added, right? The state law does not require this accommodation for a detached building.
That's correct. They leave that up to the discretion of the cities.
I don't think so.
Okay. And the only thing with keeping this as an special exception and stuff and keeping it in someone else's hands is for review purposes because this could have, as the gentleman spoke before, one of the things that we try to look at is not just what the present owner's doing, but the, what the next person, as I call it, what is the next owner of the property going to do with it? And so that's one of the things we try to bring up, to protect the neighborhoods and stuff like that. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Judy McGrath. I'm a resident at 195 Shore Drive in Laconia. And I'm here tonight to ask the city council if they would consider adopting the ordinance that with respect to the accessory dwelling units, that they make it a requirement that it would be owner-occupied for one of the two units. I have firsthand knowledge that my next-door neighbor, being a subsequent owner, back in 2000, an in-law apartment was built to specifications and regulations at the time. But in 2013, that property was sold. And since then, the owner rented out the accessory unit. Again, I don't think that's a problem because it's owner-occupied. But since 2015, that owner moved and has a primary residence elsewhere. So now that property is being rented out as a two-family. And this is in a single-family resident neighborhood, two unrelated parties, neither one being, as I said, owner-occupied.
There is a provision, this ordinance that we're considering tonight, that requires the owner to occupy either the ADA unit or the primary residence.
Correct. And I'm hoping that the city does in fact adopt that. Because I don't think it matters, you know, which unit they're there, but having the owner having a vested interest in the property, living there, taking care of it--
So in the sense you're talking about, neither is occupied by the owner?
As of right now, that is correct. And I also have firsthand knowledge that this door between the two units has been eliminated. I think that that should be enforced as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on this matter? No? Okay, I'm going to declare the public hearing on this closed at 7:42 PM. And note for the record that we will be taking this issue up tonight, again, in terms of council making a decision under unfinished business. We have no presentations tonight. Mayor's report, two items I'd like to cover tonight. One is, I have a proclamation I would like to read into the record. And this has to do with the recognition of National Public Works Week. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, it be resolved that I, Edward J. Engler, mayor of the city of Laconia, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21, 2017, as National Public Works Week in the city of Laconia. And I call upon all citizens and organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Thank you. I'll have this free to give you, Mr. Anderson. And on behalf of the council, I will second that motion, so to speak, and thank all of our Public Works employees, past and present, for their efforts on behalf of the city. The second thing I'd like to address tonight is the Laconia State School property. Most of you have probably seen news reports dealing with that piece of property in recent days. And I'd like to update you on that and answer any questions about it, if you have any. I think that this recent development in the New Hampshire State Senate is the most positive thing that has happened with regard to the state school since the prison closed. And I view it personally with great enthusiasm and primarily because someone in Concord, namely the Senate President Chuck Morse of Salem, has, is viewing the Laconia State School property as an economic development opportunity, not only for the city of Laconia, but also for Belknap County and indeed for the entire state of New Hampshire. And it has been, to say the least, an uphill fight to get anybody in Concord to have that point of view. In other words, Senator Morse is looking at that property as a potential economic driver, not only just for our city, but for the entire state moving forward, and not looking at it just simply as a piece of surplus property to either be sold or used for some other administrative purpose by the state, which may or may not fit the unique character of the land itself. And that is a huge change of direction in the state. So he has introduced an amendment to an existing bill that passed the Senate Finance Committee, not surprisingly, since he's the president of the Senate last week and is scheduled to be approved by the Senate itself on Thursday of this week, as I understand it. And so that will become part of the, that bill will then go to the House for hopeful concurrence there. And the money that Senator Morse put in the fiscal, see what's that, fiscal 19, I guess it is, budget that they're working on now, a two-year budget, he included, is going to include in that state budget, the Senate's version of it, $365,000, I think, to fund this initial effort. So what's going to happen here? And first of all, you have to understand that Senator Morse, when he's looking at this matter, is viewing it in light of the P's Tradeport Development Authority and the tremendous success for the entire state and for that region of the state that that development authority has been. And what he'd like to do is view the state school property in that same light and have the state view it in that same light. So the first step, which was what this bill calls for, is to create a nine-member commission that will be charged with the task, and given a budget to be able to do it, with the task of determining the development potential, commercial development potential for the state school property, and to hopefully morph that commission into a development authority, which is exactly what happened at P's after the federal government decided to shut down the Air Force base there. So commission is first step. Hopefully, that will lead to second step, which will be to create a development authority. The state will still own the property, but it will be taken off the books, so to speak, on the state books and put into a separate category run by a state agency, which would be the development authority. And what we're giving up here, if you want to put it in those terms, is if we bought the property, then obviously, we would control its destiny, but we would also be responsible for it, everything, including cleanup, demolition of current buildings, or reconstruction, redevelopment of current buildings, et cetera. And in this case, it will stay in the hands of the state and for now, in the hands of this commission, this nine-member commission. Only three members of this commission will be appointed by local boards. The other six members, under the law, would all be appointed by state officials. The chairman and one other member appointed by the governor, one member appointed by the Senate, the president of the Senate, one by the Speaker of the House, I forget the others, but they're, actually, the governor and council then appoint three other members. The governor, one all by himself, the governor and council appoint three members. So we would have three local, the city council of Laconia would appoint, the mayor and city council would appoint two members, and the Belknap County Commission would appoint one member. So those would be the three local people. But importantly, and again, this goes to the mindset of where Senator Morse is coming from here, is with the exception of the two people appointed by the Laconia City Council, the way the law reads, all other members of the commission, all seven members, have to be either experts in the real estate development field or in the commercial business field. And they can be from anywhere in the state. And in fact, Senator Morse is very much driven by the fact that he wants this commission to not be Lake's region-- to not be Lake's region-centric, but to be state-centric, meaning that anyone who has expertise to offer in this area will be solicited, if you will, to serve on this commission, which is a tremendous, you know, in effect, what he wants are business heavyweights to get involved in the redevelopment of the state school property, which is, I think, a significant step forward and is going to open up the land that's in our city to a lot more expertise from people around the state who are interested in this. He's already reached out to some of the heavy hitters in the state in the real estate development business and whatnot, and asked them to become involved in this. And the initial reaction has been very favorable to that. One other point I'd like to mention is that, another very positive development here in my mind on this, in terms of Senator Morse's thinking on this, is he alone, perhaps, in Concord again, understands the value and significance of the Aherne State Park property that lies immediately adjacent to the state school, and sees them as one. Not necessarily legally as one, or in terms of what kind of buildings could be built on one or the other. One of them is clearly a state park, but in terms of the Aherne State Park, which has 3,500 linear feet of frontage on Lake Wennessquam, as being a significant amenity to anyone who would choose to develop on the state school property itself. And I've been pushing that point of view for, up a blind alley for several years now, and it's good to hear someone else in Concord who believes that the value of that property is being underestimated in terms of the development of the whole. So I think while we have had conversations, or general conversations, on this council over the years about the possibility of Laconia buying the state school property from the state, I think at one time, this council actually offered $2 million for the property, a little over $2 million, five years ago or so, and that was turned down. I think that most of us, I won't try to speak for everybody, have come to the, slowly, if nothing else, to the conclusion that the, regardless of how little money, even if we could buy it for a dollar, that we would pay for that property, that the redevelopment of that, cleanup and redevelopment of that property is something that's probably well outside the reach of the City of Laconia from a financial standpoint. That it would cost way beyond our means to be able to handle a property of that size and the cleanup issues on that property, and that it is, we might need to become involved because of our access to so-called brownfield grants to clean it up as a city, and we're going to be looking into that. But I think in terms of ownership and development rights and whatnot, it is rightfully a state issue, and should be a state issue, and the state should take the lead on this, and that's exactly what this is pointing toward.
So the state owning the property would not be eligible for the brownfield grants because they're the polluters in that?
Yes. What we don't know, and what's being researched now, is whether the Development Authority would be eligible or not.
Yeah.
Or some other means for how we might be able to backdoor into those funds, and what role the city might play in that. So that's being investigated. Any questions I can answer from anybody on the council about that?
You just answered my question. We're really going to get the cleanup funds, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. I don't think we have any tonight, do we?
I'd like to see if we could set a meeting, please.
Okay.
With the Government Operations and Ordinances, for item number D to review the council rules of procedure.
Yep.
Item B?
All right. Keeping in mind that we're starting at 6 o'clock on almost every--
And we're not looking at doing this until July.
Sorry?
Or July.
July.
The first meeting in July, so it would be July 10th, if we could schedule it for 6 o'clock.
Okay.
For an hour would be enough, Mary?
Counselor Doyle would like to schedule a meeting for the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee to take up item D, review of council rules and procedures.
Six or 6:30?
Six.
On July 10 at 6 o'clock?
Yes, please.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Baer. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, and that meeting is scheduled for June 10th at 6:00 PM, July 10th at 6:00 PM.
I'm going to kill you later.
Why?
Any other committee business?
Bullwork.
Counselor Hamel.
Would it be all right to take under landed buildings number C off now?
Mm-hmm.
The Lakeport Fire Station? Or do you want to leave that on a little longer? Doesn't matter.
I think the last time we proposed that, Counselor Bolduc objected to taking it off the agenda.
Has it been sold?
Not yet.
Not yet, so.
All right, we'll leave it on until it gets sold then.
Once we get it sold. Liaison reports. Do we have any liaison reports tonight? Okay, citizens request to comment on current agenda items.
Wait a minute, I suppose I should report. We scheduled a change of use for a public hearing.
Okay.
With a--
I'm sorry?
We scheduled a change of uses--
Yeah.
--that the council sent back to the planning board.
Oh, yes.
We scheduled that for a public hearing, and that's going to happen, I believe, it's the first weekend in June, first meeting in June.
Which is when?
Well, the first Tuesday in June.
Oh, it's going to be a Tuesday.
It's always a Tuesday, when they can do it.
First Tuesday in June.
June 6th. Okay, so this is with regard to the so-called nightclub--
The nightclub issue, yes.
All right, so the planning board is going to take the nightclub issue up at its first meeting, at its meeting in June.
We took it up at our last meeting, and we scheduled it for a public hearing. So we're going to schedule it for a public hearing and then take a vote on it. And if we send it back here, by God, we're going to have another public hearing on it.
No doubt. Jose, okay, citizen comments. This is the appropriate place on the agenda for people in the audience tonight to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to address the council on a matter that's still coming up on tonight's agenda? I can't see. Is that Mr. Morash? Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. Captain Morash from the Mount Washington Cruises. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't come back after the last meeting to publicly say thank you to the board for asking the city manager and public works director to come down and chat with the businesses at Weir's Beach on the parking issue. We met last week. There were four businesses that showed up, Tower Hill, the Half Moon, the Mount Washington, and the new One of Pisaki Pier. We had a great discussion. You know, we had differing opinions. They laid out the plan as it stood. We discussed it, and it was great to be able to discuss our differences among the businesses down there at the Weirs. And I'm happy to say, we did come up with an agreement that I think all of us are satisfied with, and it's going to be presented tonight. But I just wanted to take this opportunity, because I know you guys don't always hear the thank yous, and I wanted to be sure I got back here to do that. I appreciate the city manager and public works director for taking their time out of their busy day to come down and chat with us. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks for coming tonight.
Is the agreement you're talking about, is the agreement you're talking about the one I'm looking at for tonight's agenda?
I believe it is.
Two-hour parking, three-hour parking, and five-hour parking?
That is correct.
Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Everybody's in agreement?
Yes.
I'm going to have a heart attack and die.
I know, I'm telling you.
Someone will have to write a book about--
It's amazing what, you know, you bring us together and what we can hash out.
Then we'll have to have another public hearing day.
Oh, yeah. Anyone else which should address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? Okay, we're on to the city manager's report. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo the mayor's sentiment, and I think he gave a great overview of what's happening with the state school property. I also want to go on the record with my appreciation for Senator Morse for his efforts on this. He really has a good vision and is really taking a strong leadership role on that, so we're very pleased with that. So I'm going to stick with the state school property for a second before I get to the reports that are in your agenda this evening. I had shared with the council a couple of weeks ago about a water main break that happened on the state school property that was impacting water to that site. And as it stands right now, and I think I've got the details accurate, represent accurately for you, but the water tank, water tower on that property was still in use. The water was being pumped, and then it was coming down and servicing the buildings. Well, right now, there's only a couple of buildings that the state is operating in there, and they're fairly close to Parade Road, Route 106. There were some significant deficiencies in the water main underground that was pumping the water up to that tank. And basically, the state has said that they're going to discontinue that operation and punch in a line and feed right off on 106 to handle the two buildings that they're operating right now. And that's all they need to do for those buildings. The detention facility up in the back, it was more cost-efficient for them to go in and put in a well to service that property. So that was the route they went there. That leaves Robbie Mills Field and the bathrooms up there without water at this point. And I shared that with you a couple of weeks ago. So staff and I are still working through various scenarios. We are looking at a couple of thousand-foot length to run water from the closest point. Most of the area surrounding up there is on private wells. We're looking at options of wells possibly for irrigation, and does that give us the flow that we need to operate, you know, sprinklers and stuff? Obviously, we think we're fine in the April, May, early June, as far as not being scorching heat, but as you all know, come the heat of summer, we definitely need irrigation up there. And when the crowds are up there for the ballgames, certainly much nicer to have bathrooms operating than porta-potties up there. We have been in communication with the state, Mike Connor, who's with Administrative Services, even though he's retired, he's back, and he's connecting me with someone else. The state is certainly willing to work with us to try to find a solution and allow them to access the property and possibly the water tank, but that requires pumps and us to maintain and get a feed-in from several thousand feet away, so it's not an expensive task. I don't have a definitive recommendation for you tonight, but by the end of this week, we're certainly looking at it. But I'd say we're looking in the several tens of thousands of dollars, if not more, just based on the distance, and that's even for something that I would call temporary in nature, you know, running a temporary summer line, you know, dig a trench, bury it short, drain it, you know, for the winter months. We're not looking to go anything fancy here, but it's going to be, it's going to be a cost that easily, in the tens of thousands, that we're still trying to hone in on the best solution for you right now.
Now, we don't own Robbie Mills. We lease it from the state, but we're going to be responsible for the cost of getting water to Robbie Mills. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
What about a well?
We're looking at the well. We've had a well company out there, and to handle the pressures that we need and the volume, they're looking at two wells potentially. So that's one number that we've got. I don't want to throw numbers around quite yet until we look at the options, but at least preliminary working with Seth and the Water Department's been very helpful in just talking about excavating a trench--
Mm-hmm.
--running it 3,000 feet, you know, temporary line, get it up, and then you need pump station, you need some electrical out there, coming off of 106, that's not inexpensive. Putting two wells in and getting that set up is also not inexpensive. So again, the state will cooperate with us to whatever extent they can, as far as if we need to access the state parcel, they're not going to contribute financially, they have no reason to.
Another unexpected thing that we have to deal with when we're doing the budget, right?
Yes.
All right. Now, the other thing is, the water that the state is going to be taking off of 106, are they paying--
Yes.
--the water company?
They paid all along. It was our water that got pumped into the tank.
Into the tank, okay.
They've been paying for the water all the way along. They're just going with the shortest route now because they don't need that capacity for the whole parcel.
So the tank was providing pressure for Robbie Mills?
Yes.
So where's the line broken?
Somewhere much further down to Parade. And as they were going in and trying to fix one, it was just creating a ripple effect and causing some challenges further up the line. The line is in very poor condition, and frankly, you know, the cost they were going to put in, they don't need the line to run all the way up to the tank and then come around. They can run off a 106 with a small, you know, pressure booster of some sort and get the pressure that they need in the two buildings.
Is it possible to drill a well by the tank and bring it up into the tank and then run it over to Robbie Mills?
Those are the things you have to look at, a well and then a pump, do you need electricity there to the tank, bring it over, and then long-term, as the mayor pointed out, if the property is being redeveloped, that might be a temporary fix going forward. So we're looking at a number of things. We hopefully, by the end of this week, will have the most cost-effective and the best approach for us, short-term and long-term.
So the only city water goes up Parade Road, doesn't go Eastman or anywhere in that area?
Correct. There's nothing up Mayor's Center.
No.
So.
So I'm going to ask a silly question. I assume somebody's looked at the lease with the state to make sure that they're not on the hook in even the small way.
They are not on the hook.
Okay.
Why?
We're lucky we have it.
So I'll move on to the reports that are in your agenda packet. So on the top of page 29, we start with the new construction year tied in with the assessing year with state law. So April 1st begins the brand-new year, construction value at 4.6 million. Both fire and rescue on page 29 and police on page 30 continue to be very busy with call volumes. We're winding down the year on motor vehicle registration on the bottom of page 30. We're through April, so we're 10 months of the way through the year. In order to be on target, we should be at around 83 and 1/3 percent, so we're running at 87 and 1/3 percent. So we're running strong on motor vehicles. Our property tax collection looks good. The impact fees are trickling in in small amounts. You have the balances there on the bottom of page 32. And the final, I promise, winter maintenance report of the final events that we had, a revision for the March 31st, April 1st, and then an actual event on April 4th. So those are the final. We have exceeded our snow budget. I've been working with our public works director, Wes Anderson, on the total public works budget, make a determination if we need to come to with a request to the council, possibly to transfer some funds out of the winter maintenance reserve account that we established a few years back, that we've never had to touch. But as you all know, the volume of events that we had this year, we may be coming to you with a request, certainly not of, for the entire amount, but possibly a portion. We're going to see how things shake out between now and when we get into June with the overall budget besides just the winter maintenance.
Scott, could you go over the additional fire grievance that's listed here now?
Yes, so that's, it's more of a tracking issue, and we've sat down and talked with the unions. The grievance basically is saying they don't think they're being properly credited for the vacation hours and the sick hours that they earn according to contract. And there's a formula in place, and sometimes it's in hours and sometimes it's in days. So the long and short of it is, back in 2005, the schedule for the fire department changed from where they were operating what were known as 13s and 11s, so a 13-hour day and an 11-hour day, but the shifts all happened in one pay period, if you will. So everybody was working 48 hours in a week. There would be four shifts, two 11s, two 13s. Add that together, it was 48 hours. So you were earning time based on 48 hours a week, and when you requested a day off, a day was 12 hours, when you put in for a day off, 12 hours was being removed from your vacation bank or your sick bank or whatever category it was. We went to the new schedule in 2005. It basically is called 24s, and it means that you're working back-to-back 12-hour shifts. You've got 24 hours on. Again, there's still 12-hour shifts, but the way the calendar works now is you have 24 hours on, then you have 48 hours off. So in essence, one day on, two days off, then one day on and four days off. And what happens when you actually plot it out on a monthly calendar is that rotation has you working three weeks of 48 hours a week, the way the days fall in the pay period on that schedule. And you have one week where you're only working in the pay period 24 hours. So when you average 348s and 124 and divide it by the four weeks, it comes out to 42 hours a week. So the new work week now is 42, and that's what they're getting paid on instead of 48. When you divide that into four shifts, because you average out the calendar over the course of the year--
Mm-hmm.
--and-- course of the year, um, and I should back up. So the reason we pay 42 consistently is so that someone's not getting big paychecks and overtime in one week and then small paycheck every fourth week. It just keeps it consistent and everybody's made whole. Nobody, nobody makes out better or worse on it. But now, when you're working 42 hours divided by four shifts, the shifts are no longer 12 hours, they're 10 and 1/2 hours. So therefore, the amount of hours that you earn based on working a 48-hour week versus a 42-hour week, your days are different. So even though you may be able to earn, you know, two weeks of vacation, and we break that down into hours, two weeks in vacation pre-2005 was 48 hours, I'm sorry, 48 hours times two was 96 hours. Two weeks of vacation now is 42 hours times two, 84 hours. So it's really in the conversion that they're questioning, um, and we're working through it. And I think we're on very solid footing and we just need to sit back with the union and go through it again. They're just questioning because, uh, one thing in the contract, it says you shall earn X number of hours a month capped at so many days, and they're not quite seeing that. But on the flip side, when they take time off now, they're no longer having 12 hours removed from their vacation bank, they're having 10 and 1/2 hours removed on the vacation bank. So they may not be earning as much, but when they're using it, not as much as coming out. So it's, it's basically a wash. We're just going through the paper trail so we can make sure that we're all on the same page. But Paula Baumell does a great job of keeping notes and she can pull out things from 2005, well before my time here, tell you who was in the meeting, what was discussed, her handwritten stuff. She is, uh-
We have to clone that.
She's a dynamo. Donna's already told her that she can't retire ever.
They're right.
So we're working through it. We just had a good conversation. Both sides said, hey, we need a couple of weeks to kind of dig through, and that's what we're doing. So we've scheduled another meeting. Uh, it's not for this week, but it's for next week to sit down and review it again. So that was probably a longer answer than you hoped for, but-
No? That's fine.
That's, that's what it was about.
Thank you.
Or is about. Uh, and then the second, uh, report you have in your packet for the month is the Economic Development Update. Again, unemployment rates are trending very strong locally and statewide. Um, on the top of page 36, you can see the CPIU, our inflation number. Inflation's ticked up in the first quarter of the year.
Mm-hmm.
So you can see it's, uh, it ran 2.4 percent for March. So all three numbers for the first three months are in that 2 and 1/2 percent range. And, um, I was actually just looking at the numbers earlier today. When you go back to, you know, 2014 and 15, we were around 1 and 1/2 percent. If you recall, last year, we were at .1 percent. The budget we're working on right now allows for 1.3, so this is definitely a, a little bit stronger start to inflation. I think some of that had to do with some energy prices and the economy being a little stronger and, and other sectors of the economy kicking in. Uh, and finally, tonight, I shared with the council, I want to say publicly, we're scheduled to have a, a ribbon-cutting, kind of a end-of-construction ceremony to celebrate the, uh, the Lakeside Avenue project at the Weers that is open to the public. Uh, mayor and council obviously have been invited. We're reaching out to local media, really trying to give a kickoff for the start of Memorial Day weekend, uh, that the Weers is open and a lot of great things happening there and a whole new look. And, um, have a celebration certainly with our partners like Busby and Eversource and, and other of our contract partners down there as well. So it is Thursday, May 25th at 2 o'clock in the Weers, somewhere down in the area, generally in front of the Mount Washington. We haven't nailed the exact spot, but I'm sure will be easy to locate.
A long ribbon.
So, uh, that's what I have for you this evening. Happy to take any questions, comments you might have.
Questions or comments for the manager? Counselor Hamel?
I have two. Uh, is Eversource done with the LED lighting?
We, uh, so Siemens is doing the project for us, not, not Eversource. We're down to punch list and, and literally a couple of ones here, and then we've got an opportunity where we'll be going through and doing the verification, doing some nighttime driving and that type of stuff. So I, I know we're not 100%, but we're-
Darn close.
99 point something.
Sounds good.
And again, everything was tracked from, on a spreadsheet, from when the lights were installed. It was all done on a daily tabulation. So part of what Siemens is doing is going back and working with Eversource. So we will get credit from the day the first light was installed. We'll get that credit. They'll work through that up at the end of the project as well.
Sounds good. Uh, the next thing, uh, is going to involve the whole council, but, uh, we have, on our, uh, meeting lists of the budget, we have the school listed for the 22nd-
Of May, yes.
Of May. Um, I'd like to have, see the council, if they approve, uh, reschedule that for the end of June. The state is still in the process of going through their budgets and it could be additional sources of revenue, uh, for the school at that, once that budget is passed. So I'd like to have us wait, uh, till the end of June on the school budget presentation.
In looking at the calendars to give you options, if you'd like, maybe June 19th, that's a night of a special meeting where we typically do the larger departments, but a component of that is, um, is the City Hall offices, so finance, welfare, administration, um, records, you know, clerk elections are in there, so-
Fire and public work?
Right, but I, so I, I think we could do, because there's no regular meeting that night. That's just strictly a budget night.
Okay.
So if we wanted to flip out from administration, records, finance, and welfare, we could move that to the 22nd, uh, I think with no problem. And then we could, uh, put the schools in with fire and public works on June 19th.
Does that meet your requirements? All right. So Counselor Hamel would like to, if you have the schedule in front of you or can recall it, um, we were scheduled to take up the school budget on, uh, before our regular meeting at 6 o'clock on May 22nd. And instead, what the manager is suggesting is that we could move administration, records, finance, and welfare to that date at 6 o'clock and move the school budget back to the June 19th so that, on the night of June 19th, where we would have no deadline in front of us because we would start at 6 with no meeting following at 7:00, we would take up fire, public works, and school. Is that my, can I say that correctly?
Would the state budget be passed by then?
I don't know if it'd be fully passed, but I think the Senate needs to have their work done by the end of May. And since the House didn't pass a budget, I don't know, I mean, they gotta go to committee of conference and get them to agree, but I don't think the House has a whole lot to stand on at this point where they didn't pass a budget. And it appears that, um, the governor and the Senate seem to be somewhat in lockstep. So I would think we would have a good sense of what might be happening by that point. I, I can't guarantee they'll have it passed, but-
Okay.
I think we'll have a good sense.
Any member of council object to that switch?
I'm looking. Nope.
So June 19th would be the school?
All right. We have a consensus then to schedule administration, records, finance, and welfare for 6:00 PM on the 22nd of May. And on the 19th of June, we'll take up schools, fire, and public works at 6 o'clock.
Go through the list again on what we're doing on the 22nd.
I'm sorry?
Go through the list again on what we're doing on the 22nd.
Administration, records, finance, welfare.
Okay.
10 minutes stops.
Yeah.
10 minutes. Okay, anything else for the manager? No, all right, we're on to new business.
I won't be here either, Mayor.
First couple, three items here on new business are items that would normally appear on consent and action, so I'm assuming these are new. That's why they're back in their new business tonight, things we have not discussed before. The first is a request from Lakes Region Vineyard Church Love 146 Volunteer Team to raise funds on city property on July 8th and July 15, 2017 for the Love 146 5K Run and Walk. And that is, they're asking for Opechii Park, the Wild Trail, and Intersecting Streets on those two dates, both Saturdays, 10:00 AM. Any discussion of this before we get to motions? All right, a motion being ordered to approve the request by the Lakes Region Vineyard Church Love 146 Volunteer Team to raise funds at Opechii Park and on the Wild Trail on July 8th and July 15th, 2017, as requested. Someone care to make that motion?
Don't move.
Moved by Counselor Bullock, uh, Bullock, sorry, Balance.
Remember what that-
These are tough sometimes.
I'm gonna like that.
All right. Seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion?
Um-
Counselor Baer.
I thought I saw somewhere where they were going to have a disc jockey and have music. Now I'm looking for it again.
What's the question about?
At the down below, they said that they didn't require an amplifier, so I'm, I was wondering how they're going to have, um, music if they don't need an amplifier.
Acoustic, apparently.
I think that might be on the next one, counselor.
Yeah, I don't see it on this one.
Oh, the, um-
The Ladies of the Lake.
Ladies of the Lake?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the Lakes Region Vineyard Church request, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, approved. Okay, next up, we have a request by the Ladies of the Lake Laconia American Foundation for Suicide Prevention to raise funds at Opechii Park on September 10, 2017 for their Out of the Darkness Walk. Any discussion of that request before we get to motions? Counselor Baer, are you?
Well, I have the same question. They, um, they need electricity, they're going, because they're going to have a DJ and music before and after the event, and yet they say no to having amplified sound. So I was just, you know, curious. Because then we get into the sound.
Yeah, I mean, it's the first time of applications, maybe they were confused between, are you having any, um, you know, electricity and yes for the DJ? Maybe they didn't think they're going to do anything with loudspeakers beyond that or something. But I would say if they're looking to have it a DJ, there would be that type of noise at that time in the morning.
So should we, should, should we caution the Recreation Department to, uh, caution them that if they're going to have amplified sound, they have to get a permit for that?
Yes. I will make sure Kevin's aware of that.
Okay, a motion being ordered to approve the request by the Ladies of the Lake Laconia American Foundation for Suicide Prevention to raise funds at Opechii Park on September 10, 2017 from 8:30 AM to 1:00 PM as requested with the provision that amplified sound would require a separate permit. Moved by Counselor Doyle, seconded by Counselor Balance. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed?
No, 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 I'm, I'm for it.
You're for it?
I'm for it. I'm just not listening to you. Sorry.
You're just a little slow on the uptake.
How do you feel?
Five votes the affirmative that motion carries. Actually, it was more like 4 and 1/2, but qualified. Next up is Laconia Motorcycle Week Association Bike Show and Swap Meet at Opechii Park, Request to Waive Fees. We've done, haven't we done this before?
I think for the waiving of the fees, we just want to have the council reaffirm it versus just giving approval.
Any discussions of this?
Yes.
Charlie.
Is it necessary?
Yes.
We don't want you to get out of your chair unnecessarily.
Well, I appreciate that.
You lost weight.
Well, thank you very much. Boy, that-
Something wrong with you, baby?
I pulled my pants up a little bit on that one. Ooh, you got a smile over there. Uh, we are asking for the waiver of the fees of $450. However, we are charging a fee of $35, so I didn't want you to think that that was being totally waived because the motorcycle show lasts approximately from, oh, probably 10 to 1 o'clock or something like that. And we, and we're also charging our fees for any vendors that show up and approximately the same time for them. So we are charging a fee. I just didn't want you to think that we were waiving it totally. We just thought, as we have in past years, that $35 was a fair, uh, charge for such a short amount of time. And that goes right back to the city, of course.
And that is on-
That was, that was put in the information with the application?
Well, I don't recall, but I imagine it was.
Jennifer took her care of you very well.
As, as usual, thank you.
This is at Opechii Park?
That is correct. That's on Friday.
And what, what day of the week?
On Friday, that would be the 16th.
Okay, I'm adding things to this motion here which aren't included.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, a motion being ordered to approve the request from Laconia Motorcycle Week Association for Bike Show and Swap Meet on Friday, June 16th, and to waive vendor fees and all other fees in connection with the event.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Baer, seconded by Counselor Bullock. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative that motion carries as well.
Are we not going to do the discontinuance of a portion of-
I'm sorry?
Are we not going to do the discontinuance, discontinuation of a, a portion of Elm Street?
That's item, that's the next item, number four.
Oh, I got that as number three, so I thought you skipped over.
Number four.
Number four here.
Number four on mine. I didn't touch anything. Well, we have two different agendas.
The electronic one, somebody goes in and plays.
Okay, well, on the mayor's agenda-
Doesn't matter.
That's four.
As long as we get to it.
All right. Okay. Page 47 of your packet, counselors. Uh, the next item is a request to discontinue a portion of the city's right-of-way on Elm Street. And for that explanation, I'll recognize the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've got a map on page 48 of your packet. Um, so this is the small paved area right in front of the fire station building that was just not part of that parcel. So when Elm Street was realigned a number of years back, this just became an orphan piece that just sat out there. When we were looking to go out and receive proposals for the sale of the Lakeport Fire Station, we made it very clear back in December that in order to neaten it up and we were aligning the street and doing everything else, that we were going to propose discontinuing so that that parcel could be combined with the existing lot and, A, make it usable space for a new use on that site, but B, also neaten it up for the city as far as the boundary line adjustment. So this has nothing to do with, um, site approval of parking and sidewalks or anything else that would happen at the planning board level when the applicant goes in with their, you know, with their application and it goes through their, their plan approval. This is just to discontinue that so that we can absorb it into the lot and ultimately have it available to sell. And we did send out certified letters to the immediate abutters as was required by law.
Any questions or comments before we get to motions? Everybody know what we're doing here?
Yep.
Okay, a motion being ordered to approve the discontinuance of approximately 30 feet foot wide portion of the Elm Street right-of-way adjacent to tax map lot 367-71-25 as proposed. Counselor Bullock?
Yep.
Makes that motion. Counselor Baer seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative that motion carries. All right, number five on my list is Lakeside Avenue parking signage. And, uh, Mr. Moore Ash, Captain Moore Ash addressed this a little earlier. You have in your packet on page 53, a map of the compromise which shows three-hour parking from the train station north on the lake side of the street and five hours to the south on the lake side of the street. And on the other side of the street, on the, on the Veterans Property side of the street, five-hour parking, again, going down toward the beach from the train station center line, and two-hour parking from there up to Foster Avenue on the land side. And that is the compromise, and I believe in this, we decided last time after we debated this for an hour, that this was an administrative decision. And does not require council action, so...
If there's no objection...
Unless council objects tonight, this is the way the meters are gonna be programmed.
Sounds good.
Everyone fine with that?
Yep.
Alright, we're golden. Thank you. And I think we all echo the sentiments expressed by Captain Moorash earlier, that we're, we're thankful not only for the businesses who participated in coming to that satisfactory agreement, but also to the city staff that facilitated it. Okay, item number six. And we are on to page 54, this is a request to approve a tentative agreement with, between the city and the Laconia Professional Firefighters Association Local Number 1153 of the International Association of Firefighters AFL-CIO-CLC. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the council has been briefed as to the key items, or, I mean, the items on this tentative agreement, including the cost items and other changes in it, and again, the council's role here is to vote on the cost items of the contract as it was presented to you.
And I will remind the council, by the rules of bargaining here, we are to be discreet about what exactly is included in the contract until we have approved it.
Right.
So is there any questions or anything, comments, before we get to motions? Counselor Hamel?
I got one question, I'll try and make it discreet. The... Certain other firefighters will be getting a little extra, is that... Will that be contract from then on, then, so that it would happen every time?
The differential, yes, would be part of the contract going forward, yes.
So every time there's a new contract, that would be in it?
Typically, the way it works with, with the steps to it, if you apply a cost of living adjustment or any other adjustment to that, you've created new hourly rates for the steps, and that's what would continue forward in future contracts depending on what was negotiated, so yes. It's not one-time money.
So it would be as far as the steps, but as far as the percentage, would that be negotiable each contract, or is that non-negotiable?
It could be negotiable, but realistically, I think once it's there, the likelihood of going in the reverse direction is probably not likely.
It's a candid answer.
I mean, anything is negotiable, you just, you know, it all depends on what you're willing to give and what you're willing to accept, takes two sides to come to that agreement, so.
Anyone else? Okay, a motion being ordered to approve the tentative agreement between the city and the Laconia Professional Firefighters Association Local 1153 of the International Association of Firefighters AFL-CIO-CLC. Anyone care to make that motion?
So moved.
Counselor Bowles makes that motion, is there a second? Counselor Doyle seconds the motion. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving the contract, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, the motion carries. And now the council has voted on it, I'm going to ask the city manager to please brief us and the public as to what the terms of that contract are.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so similar to the SCA contract that was approved a little over a month ago, and the change that the council approved to the wage and compensation plan, this contract with the firefighters also calls for a 1% contract, basically around July 1st, we'll tie it to the start of the pay, the pay period, so it's, it's much easier for accounting purposes, and then a 1% contract right around the January 1st date, again, tying to the first day of the pay period, so in essence, 1%, full year of the contract, 1% halfway through the contract, which if you net it out, about a 1 and 1/2% COLA, is fairly similar to what the city's working with with the tax cap increase this year. Those employees who are entitled to steps would be getting steps on their anniversary date, there is a adjustment in the pay differential between what we pay paramedic, which is a higher skilled medical designation, and the EMT advanced, which the remainder of our employees are, so all of our firefighters are also either paramedics or advanced EMT when they're working the ambulance, or even if they're going on, on an engine. Right now, the pay differential for a paramedic is 5% above the EMT rate for that extra level of, of skill and certification. What we're seeing right now statewide is there is a shortage of paramedics, so in the discussions that we've had with the union and with the chief and with other departments around the state, all communities are doing this, so we increased the differential from its current level of 5% between those two classifications to 7%, so those are an additional 2% that a paramedic's earning that an EMT is not. And part of it is the workload, all of our crews are busy, but we have a paramedic on every ambulance that's scheduled there, so paramedics just by default are ending up being on more of the medical calls, and the medical calls are a good chunk of what we're seeing out there, and then with the opioid crisis, the workload is really kicking up. So those are the cost savings, so the cost changes to the contract, similar to the other groups I mentioned, we've made adjustments for a less expensive health insurance plan, so this one is going from a $20 co-pay for office visits to a $25 co-pay, and it would be a $50 co-pay if they're referred to a specialist, it also goes from a three-tiered pricing on the drug program to a four-tiered pricing, and again, that saves some money, so we, we save some money on the health insurance, and as we've done for the past three years, we would contribute $1,000 to the health reimbursement account just for deductible items on their health insurance plan, that goes into a bank, it only can be used for deductible items, and if someone leaves the employee of the city, it doesn't transfer with them and go with them, so that is the, the basic overview of the contract, and it's a one-year contract.
We've already passed it, but does that $1,000 reimbursement, do we break even on that? Do we save that much this year? I know we did before, but...
We've, we've had it for about three years right now, and we're seeing about a 30% usage rate, so of 100% of our employees, only 30% are going and hitting something that requires a deductible, so we still have that promise to pay on the books, but statistically, when we look at our group, almost 60, 65% of either our individual plans, our two persons or our families, are not using any part of the deductible, so it's there, we do have a $2,000 deductible on our plan, which is a high deductible, this was a change that we made three years ago for all employees, and that was a way to bridge it, but I think, I think it's taken some of the concerns out, because with the family, you could be subject to that $2,000 deductible times up to three, so potentially, if, if things went poorly health-wise for a particular family in a year, they might have $6,000 out-of-pocket deductible. So we have seen it work very well, and again, about a 30% usage, if somebody retires, if somebody leaves the employee of the city, that money doesn't cash out and go with them in, in any shape or form.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, fine, we'll move on to the last item of new business, and that is a request for the city to rent a portion of Lakeside Avenue during Motorcycle Week to the Hepatitis C Hope Organization for the sum of $2,000, with the proceeds going into the city Motorcycle Week Fund. And as I understand it, this is a, the Hepatitis C Hope Foundation has signed on as a, a presenting sponsor for Motorcycle Week for this year, and the space that's being talked about, you can see on the map there on page 59, would be immediately to the north of the Progressive Insurance Booth, which has been in the street there for some years, and that same space last year was occupied by Amsoil. So this is not a new space, it's a different sponsor in the same space.
Less space.
Compressed, by 10 feet?
By like 30.
30 feet, okay. So it's 30 feet less of the street than what was occupied last year.
Three spaces.
Right, and some of you may be asking, as I did when I first heard about this, is what in the world does hepatitis C have to do with Motorcycle Week? And the answer is, I'm sure you're all just dying to know, is that this organization has identified the, the, the stereotypical demographic for those attending...
Baby boomers.
Motorcycle Week, maybe male, baby boomers, as being the primary at-risk profile for people of contacting hepatitis C. So you and I are looking at each other here, Counselor Hamel. Who knew that we were...
Yeah.
We were in that category, but that's what they're, that's what this foundation's interest in Motorcycle Week is.
Yeah, it was on the news a couple of weeks ago, that it was a serious situation.
So any discussion, comments, questions, before we get to making motions on this request? Everybody understand what we're talking about? So this is a little additional piece of revenue for our Motorcycle Week account. Motion being ordered to grant the request for the city to rent a portion of Lakeside Avenue to the Hepatitis C Hope Foundation for $2,000 plus the permit fee, with the proceeds going to the city during Laconia Motorcycle Week 2017. Counselor Baer makes that motion, is there a second? Counselor Bullock seconds the motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, that motion carries. And we are on to unfinished business, according to my, my agenda. Did we coincide on that, Counselor? We did, alright. And we have one item of unfinished business, and that is the aforementioned approval of ordinance 2017-235-04, amending City Code Chapter 235 zoning relative to accessory dwelling units. And let's, let's get this motion on the floor, and then we can begin discussion, so we'll start this by having someone please move to accept ordinance 2017-235-04 as presented. Moved by Counselor Baer, is there a second? Counselor Doyle seconds that motion. Alright, the motion's on the floor. Discussion, Counselor Hamel?
You know, I think overall, I think the planning board did a good job on this, but there's some good legit questions brought up tonight, especially about people renting out both units and, you know, now it's a two-family unit instead of what it was actually supposed to be. I'm just wondering if there's some kind of a change we can make to this that would make that illegal to do that, I mean, I know it's the person's house, but if it's not...
It is under this ordinance, you can't do that.
You can't do this.
Yeah, but they're doing it.
Well...
And it's not, it's not in writing, really. It's not in writing.
What's not in writing?
Dean is probably...
One of the units has to be owner occupied.
Yes, it says that.
This is exactly what, this, this ordinance as proposed is exactly what we would do in terms of preventing a duplex being created where the owner doesn't occupy it, because the owner is required to occupy it, and, and show proof that they're, that they're occupying the...
Now, as a matter of enforcement, yes, how are we gonna know when that happens? And usually, the answer to that is somebody whose neighbor will...
I guess my question...
Turn them in, so to speak, I'm sorry?
You got it. I'm in, I'm in the room, I was told I had, oh, Jesus. Okay, my question on this, we need to pass this by June 1st. Yes. Can we pass what we have and then tweak it later? Can we change it after we pass it?
Yes, you can always go back and do another amendment to...
Yeah, because we have until June 1st to get this taken care of, which means we have one more meeting, so...
We gotta take care of it tonight.
Yeah.
We, unless we're willing to go with no regulation by the deadline, we're so late in getting this that we can't say no, and have it come back to us in time to be effect on June 1, there isn't time.
That's, that's why I wonder if we can just go with this and then, and then change things that need to be changed.
Please suggest things that need to be changed when we get the time.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
So we do have our planning director here tonight, Dean Trefeather, so Dean can certainly answer questions, and I think it's, it's great to put some things out, you have concerns, but yes, there is a requirement in the state law, and again, Laconia's not creating this, the state legislature said you need to allow these in residential zones, and what they did allow was you to put some parameters so that they didn't run amok and, and take over everywhere. We can limit the impact to the best we can, but you can't, you can't not allow them, and you can't make things so onerous that no one would come in and put them in, there are some, according to the legislature that passed this, you know, the benefits were additional workforce housing, opportunity of keeping family units together, someone being able to stay in a, in a part of the residence and, and get income from the other, and that was some of the logic behind it, but...
Keeping people out of nursing homes, etc.
So that was the, the value to it, but it, it is a requirement that at least one of the units needs to be owner occupied, and again, I agree with the mayor that it more than likely would be brought to the city's attention by maybe some less-than-desirable activity going on in a property that had just tenants without owner occupied, who may, you know, have a little better control on it type of thing, but...
So what would be up to code enforcement to meet out these other places that are already established?
Well, that's a gray area, because they were already built under...
Yes, so you can't...
Under prior approval, so they don't necessarily, anything new going forward would need to conform with this. With the in-law apartments, it did require back in the day, you know, the door that wasn't locked, you know, this one, you know, basically doesn't have that stipulation, the door can certainly be locked, somebody could add on, have it as an accessory dwelling, and choose to still use it under the old style of use with, with an in-law, and they could choose not to lock the door if they didn't want to, but there's not that requirement, there's no requirement that it only be used for a relative or a family member type of thing, so this was meant to put protections in place, because in theory, in reality, every single-family residence could be able to have an accessory dwelling unit as a, as a part of it now.
I'd like to bring up one thing I brought up at the last meeting that I have been enlightened on, the, you might recall, at the last meeting, I called attention to the fact that in four residential zones, RR1, RR2, RS, and single-family residential, what is now permitted as a right already in this city, seeing these accessory dwelling units, is now only going to be permitted by special exception, and I thought that was wrong on a couple of fronts, not the least of which was that clearly the legislature's intent in creating this legislation was to make it easier to have dwelling units, not more difficult to have accessory dwelling units, and to me, going from a permitted use to a special exception, and requiring that level of bureaucracy was an additional requirement that makes it harder and more difficult for people to comply, however, the, the planning director has informed me that by state law, by the state law, because we are requiring conditions on what is an acceptable accessory dwelling unit, by size, door, parking, et cetera, et cetera, we have no choice but to require a special exception to do that. If we, if we simply had no specific limits on these, then we wouldn't need to do that, but I'm told now that it is a requirement, that they have to go have a, they have to have a special exception process in order to enforce these extra guidelines and parameters that have to be met, so I am silenced on that issue. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance as presented, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Okay, we have no nominations or elections tonight, council comments? Council comments tonight, Counselor Bowles?
I've got a council comment, which I don't normally do, but I couldn't help but pay attention to the school board, and the new salaries, and the tax cap, and responses to that, and I, I have an observation that I stole from somebody else, and the observation is simply this, for, at least at the time that I've been on the council, we have adhered to the tax caps, we've done some great stuff, we've, the Colonials on track, the Weers is on track, the state school continues to be a juggling ball, but we're working on it. But as we've considered the three budgets that I've been a part of, and this will be the fourth, only the fourth, you folks have been doing this for, some of you have been doing this for a while, it, for the last two budgets at least, and I need to review my notes, but it seems to me that, and this is just food for thought, folks, it seems to me that what occurs is, is... that fire and police and city departments get by with a modest increase with respect to last year's budgets. And increasingly, we've been asking the school board to take a major, to take some kind of a major hit, which is hurt even more by the fact that state funding was radically reduced last year. I don't know what the numbers are going to be this year, and I'm glad you moved this to June so that we can get an idea of what numbers we're dealing with. But that's just food for thought. I don't want to get involved in a tax cap debate at this time. I want to avoid the tax cap, I mean, avoid doing anything with the tax cap and find a way to get a solution here that works for everybody. Because my thought is, quite frankly, our schools and our children are our most important asset, and if we want to get people to come here, we need to be competitive, so. Amen, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other council comments tonight? Okay, Counselor Baer moves, we adjourn.
Yes.
Seconded by Counselor Bullock. Yes, she says.
She always does that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.